No votes were taken, no decisions made. We open our regular meeting for May 14th, 2019. Mr. Woods, would you do the invocation for us, please?
Oh gracious, Heavenly Father, once again, Lord, that you allow us to summon together once again. Father, we thank you, Lord, for watching over us from the last meeting to this meeting. Father, we come together with all minds and ideas, allowing us to use what we have to make our kind of better place to play, work, and live. Father, with these our business in your Son Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Thank you. First, approval of agenda items. Hope you've had a few minutes to take a look at our agenda for this evening.
Madam Chair, I think most will approve the agenda written. Second.
It's been moved in second that we approve the agenda items as printed. All in favor, please let it be known by raising your right hands. Thank you, unanimous. We have a public hearing for ordinance 781 to provide for the franchising procedures and standards for private ambulance services in Marlboro County. Mr. Mullin, would you address this?
Yes, ma'am. This is an ordinance that obviously we've read a couple of times now that will provide rules and procedures and really more just assurances that folks that are operating private ambulances and transport services in the county, you know, have insurance and the sort of thing that you would expect from any business. These type ordinances exist in a lot of counties in the state and with our new county EMS system, it's important that we have that. And also, the final version will include standards that will have to be met for first responders. So if we have a volunteer or ambulance service in the county that wants to also respond, they'll have to meet these certain standards. So we have, are fine tuned in the final version, but we'll have that for your next meeting.
All right. Thank you. Any questions or comments from the public?
Question. Question.
No vote right now.
Hearing none. We will move on to approval of the minutes. April 1st, a call meeting, April 1st, 2019.
Make a motion, approve, April 1st. Second.
All right. It's been moved in second that we approve the minutes for the April 1st call meeting. All in favor, let it be known by raising your right hand, please. Thank you. Next, April 9th, regular council meeting.
Prove.
It's been moved in second that we accept the minutes for the April 9th, 2019, regular council meeting as printed. All in favor, let it be known by raising your right hand. Thank you. Oh business, and ordinance, ordinance 782, to adopt the annual budget and to make appropriations from Marlboro County for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2019, and ending June 30th, 2020. Second reading. Give us an update, please, Mr. Mullin.
Yes, ma'am. As we discussed in our work session prior to the meeting, we're preparing a budget for the next year and to just touch on a few highlights and not revisit everything we went through. We currently have, our budget as we worked up the first pass of our general fund budget is at $11,00581 and last year we were $11,370. The increase is due to items that are out of our control. The biggest one is health insurance, which is $225,000 increase. Our insurance we pay on vehicles and property liability, 25. Some software required by the state, 15. And an increase in retirement contributions by the state of $50,000. You know, it's, these things are things we can't control, particularly the state mandates that come without any money attached. We did last year, for the budget this year, cut cost $100,000. So we're taking a step back, one step forward and three steps back. So that's a difficult situation to be in. At the same time, our revenue, the money we bring in, has basically stayed exactly the same, not much difference. You know, 10, 20, $30,000 difference in an $11 million budget's not much. We, we're fortunate it didn't go down, you know, a lot of counties are seeing that. And we do have some things on the horizon with economic development that may end up in bringing more revenue, but not next year. So we are right now sitting with about a $600,000 or a little more than $600,000 deficit. Now, in the past two years, we've presented and the council has approved a budget with about a $300,000, $350,000 deficit. That money's taken out of reserves that we maintain, that we're required to maintain. We have, when we did those, when we, when you all approved those sort of deficits, we then went and worked to try to save money during the year. And in the past two years, our end of the year deficit was only about $100,000. And we don't want to use our reserves up because we are legally required to keep a certain amount and, but $600,000, $650,000 out of reserves is just not acceptable if we want to keep going in the direction we're going in. So with the input we received from council in the work session, we will sharpen our pencils. We have some items that we're waiting on information. Not only does the state give you things to pay for, pay for without any money to pay for them, they also wait and give you information in about a week before your budget has to pass. So we're chasing some of those things down. And before the third reading, we'll be able to come in and hopefully tighten this up and council can make decisions on, you know, where to find other revenue if we have to do that. But that's it in a nutshell, and we talked about it at length in the work session, so.
All right. Well, we certainly thank you in the finance department and staff for working on the budget. It's taken quite a bit of man hours. We appreciate the input and the numbers that you presented us with. Any questions or comments? Have a motion for second reading?
Motion.
It's been moved in second that we approve the proposed budget, ordinance 782, for second reading. All in favor, let it be known by raising your right hands. Thank you. Ordinance 783, to approve the capital improvement plan from Marlboro County for the period of fiscal year 2020 through 2024.
Madam Chair, this is something we pass every year, sort of a wish list of items that need to be replaced, vehicles and that sort of thing. This year, we've had somewhat of a change in the last few weeks to where we're going to use a new method of acquiring vehicles, lease purchase plan that other governments are using. So we may actually, this may be more of a functioning document, not just a wish list. So we'll have that for you. But right now, it looks like we'll be, we'll present to you all a request from the Sheriff's Department and a request from administrative staff to replace a large number of county deputy vehicles, 10 to 15. Those vehicles are over 10 years old and they're not safe. And fortunately, there's a program that'll allow us to, for our money to go further and be able to do that. So that will be brought to you for third reading as well.
Another example of your diligence and finding some cost-saving measures, if you want our sheriff deputies to be safe on the road. Entertainer motion for second reading?
Make a motion for second reading. Second.
It's been moved in second that we accept ordinance 783, the capital improvement plan for 2020 through 2024. All in favor, let it be known by raising your right hand. Thank you. Next, ordinance 784, establishing a purchasing policy of Marlboro County, second reading. I understand our current one is quite old and there have been some updates. It was interesting reading the kinds of things that you all were covering.
Yeah, like a lot of things in government, you know, everything's very incremental. You'll apply a patch or you'll add a little something to it. And we've gone a few years, probably 10 years, without a really hard look at our purchasing policy. And so Mr. Carabo led that effort and he went and found several, well, we asked other counties for their plans. And then we chose one that we felt was, you know, good, but also good for our side. And this, this one is actually a model from the Budget Control Board that Kershaw County has. And so Doug's gone through here and tweaked this and then all the staff got, folks, ladies and gentlemen, will be looking through it. But just a couple of quick things that, you know, are worth noting. We wanted to make sure we kept a local preference council passed that, so a local company gets a, I think, 10%. At a certain level, they get a 10% advantage over somebody out of town. Want to make sure that we don't just help industries coming in here, we help businesses that are struggling to make money here. The other thing, we made it more spelled out on how you get bids or prices when something's a service or not just a, you know, hey, we need to lace six bricks right here. It's easy to put a specification out and get a bid on that. But other things are more soft stuff, so we had to have that. And then, right now, our current thing requires anything $10,000 or more, advertise, have a meeting, bring it to you all, it takes 60, 90 days. And in this world, 25, you know, that's not enough. So that's going up to 25 before we have to do that. And that's in line with other folks. So that's sort of the gist of it and we can go into more detail at the third reading, you know, once we have it completely finalized.
All right. Questions or comments? Otherwise, entertain a motion for second reading of ordinance 784.
Motion. Second.
It's been moved in second that we approve the second reading of ordinance 784, establishing an updated purchasing policy for the county. All in favor, let it be known by raising your right hands. Thank you. New business, ordinance 785, authorizing Marlboro County to enter into a memorandum of understanding between Marlboro County School District and the Marlboro County Sheriff's Department and Marlboro County for the School Resource Officer Program. First reading, title only.
Very briefly, you know, there's been some discussion at school board and then back here about the School Resource Officer Program. And we have a current agreement with the schools for two officers and it expires this year unless both sides choose to renew it. And there's been some, you know, public comments made by the school board and then dialogue between staff at the schools and I, you know, the school, I think the school superintendent was hoping that we would share more in the cost of operating the program, but obviously, as you know very well from the budget process, that we can't do that. So what we have done is the sheriff and I have worked to try to reduce costs as much as we can. And primarily, the sheriff has some ideas about how to buy vehicles that'll cut that amount in half. So what we want to do is bring to you all, next meeting, a per officer amount. And you've already done this once, but we're going to try to make it a little better to help the schools. And then in that agreement, like the agreement we have now, if the sheriff, because that's his thing, decides he wants to do more of them, take on more of them, you know, in the city or wherever, then we just multiply that out. And the other, last key part of that is that we've asked that the contract be for five years and not one year. Because if we have one or two and something goes, the schools decide to go another direction, we could probably figure out a way to keep that person on. But if we have five or six or seven and we didn't have an agreement, we'd have to let somebody go. And we don't ever want to hire people and then have to let them go, you know, if we can help it. So we're hopefully, we met, I met with superintendent Friday afternoon, just folks that think government people don't work on Friday afternoon. And I think we're where we need to be, we'll see. But if we, if we request you approve the title only so that we can get it moving along, there's some grant money that schools can get and we would allow them to put that towards what they owe us. And we need to do that quickly.
All right. Entertain a motion?
I'll move that we accept this ordinance 785.
All right. It's been moved in second that we approve first reading, title only, for ordinance 785. All in favor, let it be known by raising your right hands. Thank you. Resolution 051901, approving a mutual aid agreement between the State of South Carolina and Marlboro County. Mr. Mullin, if you please.
Yeah, this is very simple. This is a standard agreement for emergency situations like we had last fall, to have an arrangement where the state can come in and help us and we can help the state. Just to have that legal document in place.
All right. All right. Entertain a motion?
So move. Second.
It's been moved in second that we approve resolution 051901. All in favor, let it be known by raising your right hands. Thank you. Resolution 051902, a resolution in support of waiving the right to purchase property located at 166 Industrial Lane, Veniceville, South Carolina, in the Marlboro County Industrial Park. Mr. Mullin, please give us details of this.
Yeah, this is one that we had some questions about before bringing it to you. Recently, there was a public hearing and some activity here to allow AAC or whatever that's become now, to seek some funding through JADA in order to finish the plant that is in the industrial park that was going along in '08 and '09 and had trouble and went bankrupt. So in doing that, there's a legal requirement, down in it, down deep in it, there was something that said we would always have a right of refusal to buy it. You know, and you probably know, that means buy it at their price or what they're asking for it. And so Sam Moses, our economic development attorney, calculates that to be around $2 million to buy the, to buy that part if we wanted to, but you really aren't, you know, it's, there's mortgages and liens and things involved, so really the price is more than that. And so not to overly simplify it or gloss over, but we ask him to review it and we ask him for his recommendation. And his recommendation was that council approve that. And so that's my recommendation.
All right. It sounds about right to me. We don't want to buy something we can't afford or don't have enough rights to the liens and mortgages that you mentioned. That company has a history with us, to say the least.
Well, I will say, those of us who are around have a bad taste in our mouths for it. And that's exactly how I went at it. But I think this is what's needed to make it go and happen.
And we have good legal counsel on that, so that sees the demand.
Yeah, this is one where I trust that.
Yeah. All right. Any questions? Make sure everybody understands what we're doing here. All right. Entertain a motion, please?
So move. Second.
It's been moved in second that we approve resolution 051902, waiving our right to purchase this property at 166 Industrial Lane. All in favor, let it be known by raising your right hands. Thank you. All right. Appointments to boards and commissions. We are asked to consider the reappointment of Mr. Sam Bass to the PD Workforce Development Board for an additional three-year term. The letter from the Ms. Jolette Dukes at the Workforce Development Board, or Department at the COB, is recommending that we reappoint Mr. Bass to this position.
Madam Chair, may I appoint Mr. Bass?
Second.
You have a question?
No, no, I was going to second.
All right, thank you. It's been moved in second that we approve Mr. Bass's reappointment to the PD Workforce Development Board for three more years. All in favor, let it be known by raising your right hands, please. Thank you. Finance report and administrators report?
Yes, ma'am. Finance report, very brief. We've obviously been deep in the budget and Ms. Ainsley's back at work and so we look forward to having her back. And she'll be presenting these going forward. But our expenses are in line with where we want to be this year. We've issued the notice that, you know, we're going to stop accepting purchase requisitions because we need to let them settle out. We're doing that. And revenue is where it needs to be. Ours is not out of line with where we want it to be for the year. So that's that, very brief report. As far as administrative report, we have employee service anniversaries. We have Ms. Ainsley Moore, six years, Teresa Burgess, 17 years, Ryan Oxendine, six years, Arthur Hamer, 21 years, Sheriff Charles Lemon, 12 years. We've been here a little longer than that, they had. They started here at some point. Sharon Thomas, 14 years. We have the annual Association of Counties Conference in August, so please get with Ms. Bundy to get yourself lined up with that if you haven't already. As far as economic development, we're really excited that next, this Saturday, from 10 to 2, Eris, the folks at Baudor Building in Clive, are having the job there. So they, we, they asked to run a full page ad, which we've done, and we'll run another one this week. So we're glad to see that happening and we're hoping folks that maybe were doubting that was real are seeing that it is real. And they actually are saying that they are going to hire more than they predicted they would when we did the deal. Interesting parts is, you know, they, they told me some of the wages they pay and they are very competitive and they have benefits. But anybody who's working in a factory in Marlboro County will appreciate that they're going to have heated and air-conditioned workspace. So you'll be working in a factory with air-conditioned if you get a job there. And that's kind of a big deal. They're going to, you know, just to remind you all, they're making modular cubes that they build apartments out of. So not modular homes necessarily, but, you know, a bedroom and then they haul it and they put them all together like Legos and make a house out of it. So anyway, if you want to come out for that, it's from 10 to 2 and they'll have hot dogs and stuff like that. We had our second annual countywide cleanup event on Saturday, May 4th, and it was, it was a good, a great success. We had a lot of other things going on. Had the prom, we had art show, we had, we had, I can't even remember everything we had going on. But we had about 600 people come out and we collected a bunch of trash. We did note that a lot of the trash on the main highways was less than last time and the theory there is, I think, was it your theory, Mr. Steen, or was it Mr. Carabo, one of y'all? Is that the last time we did it, it hadn't been done and so you're picking stuff up out of the ditch. You pick it up 10, 15 years worth of trash. So it was a little bit better. We only saw, we saw one snake at least, maybe a couple of snakes. Found some interesting items I won't go into in public, but anyway. So we, we, we thank everybody who participated and staff that organized it, you know, we've kind of gotten it down pat now and we'll try to do one next year or do it earlier so it's not hot and the snakes aren't crawling as bad. The last thing I had was, you know, we discussed in our work session about the different options for solid waste collection in the county. You know, currently, we have a company picking up roll carts and then we have convenience centers. And council expressed a desire to get input from the public. So we'll be scheduling community meetings out in the county and in the towns where people can come out and look at the options we have and give us their thoughts on what will work. We, we want to clean the county up and we want to make sure people get a good service for their money. And we want to make sure that companies providing that service can pay for, you know, can make money or cover their costs. But there's some tough decisions there and trying to figure out what to do. So by having those meetings, we hope folks will come out and give their input because we're all in it together and we're all impacted by decisions council makes. So that's, that's my report, brief. I can answer any questions. Got you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
All right. We have one person, Ms. Kristen Miller, that signed up. She's with the media literacy program here.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. I first want to thank you for allowing me to be on the media team and be at every meeting you have. Allow me to be able to witness what I can do for the community and what I cannot do for the community. I will be leaving in June. This will be my last official meeting as one of the board, the team members. I've been on the team for five years. It's put a big impact on my life. I believe in, I'll be leaving in June to go to college. I'll leave June 22nd. It'll be my last time seeing you, next meeting, I won't be a member of the media literacy, but I'll be here. Again, I want to thank you for everything you've done, everything you will do. I will be coming back to visit. I'll be coming back to help. You'll see me around.
Okay, great. Where are you going to school? Where?
Live in Arts in Raleigh.
In where?
Raleigh.
Raleigh, North Carolina, not too far from you. On behalf of Marlboro County Council, we have a gift for you for being a diligent member of the media literacy team and for your faithful service for five years, that's a long time. So I'll see you've got some young people that are learning from you and just say thank you for your work and we wish you all the best in the future. We have one other person graduating, Mr. Philip Burgess. He is not here, but we will make sure that he gets his gift too. All right. Recognition council members, who wants to start first? All right, Mr. Woods, thank you.
Young lady, we thank you, you know, and the Duke team that you train in, you know, feel free to talk to us and, you know, and we thank y'all for coming out. And from afternoon time, because we know yours adults these days have a lot of things to do. And for y'all to come out for our council meeting to learn camera work and, and see how business is being run through the county is all hats is off to y'all. And we wish you luck in your college career. It's an exciting time, it's an exciting time in your life. So embrace it, enjoy it. And I'm good after that. She got, I'm about to tell my eye.
How is it?
I'm good. I'm good.
I would like to say also, thank you for your time spent with us. We enjoyed you and you did a wonderful job doing what you did. And I hope that you continue to progress in your endeavors, in school and right on up, the ladder. And we will be looking forward to seeing you again, okay? Now, the next thing I have to say is this, I don't talk too much, but I want to say this. Is it all right? I want to ask the sheriff something.
Yes.
Okay, Sheriff Lemon?
Yes, ma'am.
I'd like to ask you something, sir.
Yes, ma'am.
Now, I talked to, I was over at Lowe's yesterday and I was in there looking for a part I had to get for my lawnmower. So this guy was in there, he said, he said, I've seen you around Veniceville. I said, yeah. So I'm from Veniceville. He said, I'm from Veniceville too. He says, have you heard this story? I said, what story? He said, we got alligators running around Marlboro County. And I said, alligators? He said, yes, and one came out the creek and one came out another area. Is that true?
It is.
It is. So that means I got to go seek and I find me a shotgun or something and get loaded up because I tell you, I got, it's a creek right behind my house. And I'm going to die. I know I got arthritis, but I guess I'll have to get my little dog here, pull the trigger, but I have to do something. But I wanted to find out that because I did hear that.
Yes, ma'am.
That it was some alligators running. And I said, I'm going to ask the sheriff, is that true? It is true.
Yes, ma'am. And one part of the county, about Wallace area, it was about 10 foot. Got to come out of this house and then it come out the doorstep.
Wow. Well, you say one of them was roaming down Main Street.
Do you know that? So, do you know that?
I saw that picture.
Yeah.
At the marathon station.
At the marathon?
At Alpine Street, I think.
Okay, okay. I just wanted to verify that it's that and it's true. All right.
Since Ms. Cord got all that, yeah, I don't have anything.
They tell me Gator bites taste pretty good. Next time the sheriff has to do that, I'll send Gator bites.
I just want to thank Ms. Miller for years of service. Thank you for dedicating five years to it and I wish you best in your next endeavor. So we thank you for that. Hopefully, I know Bird has and I've caught a lot of, you know, I guess you would say slight about our roads, but you know, it's nothing that we have any control over our state roads. But you know, I think that I've seen some paving equipment going up, being unloaded close to number one today. So hopefully, Highway 1 will be paved and reopened. What I don't understand is, looking at traffic count last week, we have one road, OI Road, it has about 1,100 cars a day, they're still closed. And then we have one road, Level Green Truck Road, that has 100 cars a day, that the state went in with funds and has redone the bridge, I mean, a lot of equipment, been there quite a while, so I don't understand what they do. So you know, it's why they would take all the resources for a 100 traffic count. That's their, their numbers, where we get the numbers from. 100 cars a day, a road that goes to nowhere, nobody lives on, I don't even think, and spend a lot of resources and money on that road versus, we have roads which is OI Road and I think there's some Adamville Road and Highway 1 and I guess one over in Bird's area that, you know, still not done anything on. So hopefully, we can get some answers or somebody can give us some answers of why you would take resources and just, I call it throw it away versus put it in places where it's much needed. Especially whenever we talk about our budgets, you know, tapping every penny we can get to, you know, make it work. And then they just, seems like they don't want to hear from, from citizens or council people or anything about fixing some of the other roads. So hopefully, we can get it addressed and hopefully they'll give us some answers.
All right. First, I'd like to thank Sheriff Lemon for finding a program to get something worked out for you to get the cars that you need and bring it to our administrator for y'all to work that program out as an idea program. Glad y'all brought it to the council today. I think that's just really going to work.
Second, young lady, I wish you the best of luck. Come back and see us anytime.
Same goes for me, and good luck in college, and just take care of yourself, come back. Thank you for your time with us, too.
Thank you.
That's all I got.
Okay, thank you, Kristen, for everything you've done the last five years, and good luck in Raleigh. Regarding the 381 South Road in McCall, we're down to the family that owns the pond and DOT working together to come up with a solution. I think we're, we're getting pretty close, so hopefully, by the end of the week, or first of next week, we'll have an answer from the DOT, and it's been eight, it's coming up on eight months, and that traffic count on 381 is sixteen hundred cars a day, and it just didn't make any sense to me that a road, and I think they're actually putting a bridge in over a culvert that has a hundred twenty-five cars a day that go over it, and we've got two roads here in the county that have over a thousand cars a day go down, and both of them's been out now eight months, you know, so, but hopefully, we can get that resolved and make a lot of people happy, really in the whole county. That's about all I got.
All right. Thank you. I'd like to say, once again, I appreciate the work that the administrator and the finance department have done to pull together this budget, and Ms. Bundy, at some point, can you pull us and the administrator set another budget meeting, because this was just preliminary, we need to do some more, massage these figures some more if we can. With that being said, I will call this meeting adjourned.